Is that all while we're on call meeting order? Roll call for board members.
Cox?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
And Rachel.
Discuss and take action on present agenda on all items under this present agenda will be heard collectively unless opposition is presented, in which case the contested items will be considered and discussed as appropriate action taken separately. A meeting from February eleventh meeting, I make motion that uh, B paying the bills, PSO law camps, real water account, and Waste Connection and ONG, I make motion if we pay, save the bills.
Yes.
That's the ones that need signature. At least the ones that are not.
Item lab?
Yes, sir. That was for the inspection, the diagnostic of the problem. That was for the installation of the phone, the phone service, the first one, the phone service and the internet. It's just the confirmation page. I think you accidentally missed the Waste Connections, but there you go.
Just that one, you did have the amount in the box.
Don't overdo this already.
You're fine.
I write one check a month out of my personal account, so it's everything else I do online. It's the next one, it's, it's after this one, you'll see.
But we were.
Oh, I've got some, yeah, no, I just meant. That should start to drop now, that, now that long daylight savings and the, we end up going so much later. Cause it's, it's, it fluctuates when it gets darker, darker and more, more hours of dark than.
So you get, number four, discuss and take action on Brittany Eagleson from Waste Connection to present new contracts and direct billing to customers.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so the contract I have here doesn't change anything as far as service levels goes. All it addresses would be us taking over the billing. Um, so we would direct bill every customer, we would be responsible of collections. Um, any bad debt, it's on us. Whatever we collect that month, we would then take, we call it a franchise fee of four percent of that um, collections and cut a check back to the town. Um, so month to month, it would vary not much, but if, you know, say April, we have a couple people we aren't able to collect from, so that, those residents or uh, businesses wouldn't be a part of that lump sum that comes back. But as far as service levels go, nothing else would change. Um, it would just be us taking over the billing and the collections.
On the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but on the, um, like I have a, a small dumpster, so I guess it's the two yard dumpster in my private property. So it's, is the fifty-nine ninety-nine, is that including, is that the total price?
That's everything, yes. So of the, you know, of that and anybody else that has that two yard, the four percent's coming out of that.
Oh, I'm not worried about that. I meant like, there's not gonna be like fifty-nine ninety-nine for the unit and then X amount of dollars for billing me, X amount of dollars for tax.
That includes the billing, that's everything, yep. That is the charge.
That's everything. That's only like a three dollar and fifty cent raise on that.
So is that, the process of them to live?
Yep.
They've been, uh, not here, but we haven't, our contract's been out for how long? Quite a while, several years, two years.
Yeah, I mean it. Like when it's coming up, you mean?
Isn't this contract, we haven't had a new contract in a while?
We haven't had a new one in a long time, so this original contract, uh, we took over from a company called WCA. We had, uh, purchased their assets in this market and swapped with them in Ada. And so Waste Connections hasn't ever had a, a contract here, except the one that we bought over from WCA. Um, so all of our, the old contracts in WCA's name, they just assigned it to us. So it started back in two thousand nine, I believe, and it just rolls over every couple of years.
So the prices will be what?
And we, we just sub check to you?
Correct, yes, the bill would come from us, the, I mean, I could share this. Um, I have, I only have.
Yeah, we got some also.
Um, but we would. Yes, and then the bill would cost.
I haven't even.
How much is fifty-four fifty in that?
Okay, so you probably have the two yards.
Yeah.
So it would go to the fifty-nine ninety-nine.
That's what I have too Frankie, that's why I asked.
There's a lot of two yards.
Seven dollars difference.
What is ours, Earl?
From, mine's fifty-four fifty, so it's like three dollars, yeah, five dollars difference. We just got poly cart.
They've had the poly carts will be twenty-seven fourteen. If you want another one, two, ten eighty-one.
Additional.
Yes.
Like if, uh, we needed new cart or something, we call you, you guys.
Yes, and the cost, there's no cost associated with that, so if the cart's broken, wheels broken, it's on us, yes. I mean technically we.
What about the ones that we set up for the townwide cleaning?
You would still get that, the big roll-off dumpsters.
Okay, it's free.
Yep, there'll still be three annually.
Okay. That'll work.
When do we have townwide clean?
Last year, you guys only used two.
I was being nice.
Oh, okay.
Last year, you only used two of them, so, I mean, they are great and.
That's usually that'll be, yeah.
I mean, they're free, so you should definitely utilize them if you can.
I don't remember that. Can somebody explain that to me Frankie? You've been here the longest.
They usually sit, a lot of times they'll sit one up here.
Oh, that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the big industrial.
Oh, I know what you mean.
And then sometimes they sit, they sit another one down the hill, right? And it's for everybody, I mean, if you got stuck, you need to.
Oh, so like you were, you know, your store.
Your big wing.
Yeah. 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 Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Furniture, I mean, if, everything.
I've never lived in a small community that does that. I lived in El Reno and they called it large trash pickup and it was every, it was three times a year, so every four months and you just sat it out on a specific day on, right next to where your poly cart would normally go, so I didn't know about dumpster thing.
You guys coordinate that, you pick the day and the time, we could send them wherever.
Okay, now will this contract need to be renewed every year or is it?
It's for, it's a five-year contract.
It's five-year contract?
Yep. And there's, in every one of our contracts, there's a performance clause, so if we fail to perform, you have an out, you're not stuck in it, but, um, it, it's basic five-year with a five-year renewal option.
Okay, so have you been, I mean, is being paid right, right now?
Yes, yep, everything's current, yep. I didn't check before I came here, but, um, whenever I initially talked to Earl and then Rachel, everything was up to date at that point and I could check.
And I just went online, I have it right here. Um, the, the March bill is paid.
Yeah, I, that's why, I don't think you guys are delinquent.
No, not at all, March bill is paid.
It's never been dropped by attention, so.
It wouldn't be delinquent because the town gets the bill, the town pays the bill?
Yes.
It would be the town being shorted because of.
We've actually received payment for February and will be receiving payment for Marches next week.
Okay.
Yes, that's been discussed and handled.
Yeah, but what I was, what brought my concerns was the water department not being correct where bills are due first, cut off on fifteenth or whatever, how that is. People in town failed to pay their water bills, continue to have water and trash.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And the town's still paying for the trash service, but we're not getting recouped, that is.
I, yeah, and that way with the direct billing, then the town will be removed.
Exactly.
That was your point at the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
That makes sense. Um, and also then the town would be getting four percent back doing it with the direct billing. We'd get a franchise fee each month, um, returned, kind of like ONG gives us a, a franchise fee every month. And then, um, also we would not be paying out for anybody to collect that. So that overall, just the, not paying out somebody to collect the money saves twenty-four hundred dollars for the town. And then you add on the four percent that we'd be getting each month in return for them doing the direct billing, then the town's actually got, they're recouping, they're not ever gonna be at a loss or shortchanged this way, that way actually.
So is that to them to take care of the ones that don't pay?
Yes, ma'am, it would be totally off of.
We would extend service and then eventually remit the container.
It would be off of the water boards plate completely, the town's plate completely, and it would go to the company that actually is providing the service, just like PSO. We get our PSO bills, everybody here gets their own, same thing.
And we do it, like, we do it for smaller communities. And that's why I'm saying monthly, the amount that we cut back will change just depending on who we can collect from. And it'll just, it doesn't vary much. Um, I put it for April first, but I said it could be changed depending on whatever they decided. I had just filled out April first as a we would be able to take it over as soon as April first.
Well, I just paid the water bill. They had the trash on, so. I wanna know.
I do too. That's what I said, don't take it, it could just about.
I think we'll run table S after, that's not, on this.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make motion we table this, discuss a little bit more.
Yes.
Hey, Ms. Brittany, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. When the board is ready to bring it back to the table, I will inform you of the decision and send you a copy of, uh, this site and, uh, the meeting minutes attached, okay?
No problem, I appreciate everyone's time.
I would appreciate you, Ms. Brittany, thank you.
Appreciate it. Be careful going. Thank you.
Drive safely.
Thanks.
Okay, number five, discuss and take action on purchase, purchase for additional lighting for the community center.
Okay, um, Brittany, you can find these at Walmart?
Oh, we can?
Yes, you can get them and you can get them in black or in white. They're motion detectors, they have thirty-two hundred looms. Um, they're waterproof for yard, porch, garage, back doors, things like that. They're only thirty-four ninety-nine a piece.
Are they solar or you gotta wire them?
Got lighting times, detection sensitivity.
Electric or solid?
Uh, electric, yeah, you'd have to wire them. You'd have to wire them.
So they're thirty-four?
Ninety-nine a piece. So that's about seventy dollars, it's sixty-nine ninety-eight.
Well, when they throw out everyone back here, so you're looking.
Okay, I didn't know you wanted two out there, I'm sorry.
We're gonna put one out here and one for side back this way and then one in the back door. About a hundred and something dollars.
It'll be a hundred and four dollars and ninety-seven cents since we're taxing them.
Plus electric.
Plus you have to have electrician, right?
Yes, ma'am, but that, we're just deciding if they want to do this and then I will get quotes from at least two other, two electricians and present it to them. This is all, is all the same, it's just.
You're slow.
Just other, other ones, this, this is the one. If you wanted to see a better up close picture, there it is. Get you a better up close, sorry. They just printed out a bunch of junk that it's on. Yeah, and the internet is. Huh?
Call the picture, when they get through it.
I call them with electric, when electricity goes out, they won't work. No, I said when the electricity goes out, they won't work.
No.
Well, nobody, if we don't have electricity, nobody in town will have electricity, so.
If we have solar.
Cigarette lighter.
Do you want to consider these or would you prefer me to look for solars?
Solar's gonna be higher.
If it's cloudy.
Well, they don't even last that long most of the time though, so it's always happening till.
Fills burnt out.
You know, yeah.
Okay, so.
I make motion that we go ahead with these lights.
If it's cloudy, they won't come on either.
I know, right?
Okay, number six, discussing take action on update from Gradoff fencing.
Uh, as you all can tell, Gradoff fencing is there at the, uh, park. They've started the installation, they started the installation around the utility pole and the utility box also, as you guys had requested, so they're in the process, they should be done this week.
We were setting concrete when I seen them.
Yes, ma'am.
How high is it, how tall is it?
It's, uh.
Four foot.
Four foot.
Okay.
Four foot, sorry.
It's alright.
Okay, number seven, just discuss and take action on update on Gutter's Enterprise Fix, it's storm Saturday.
Um, they have fixed it, uh, he has a programmed radio and that system is up and running and we will, um, we will get an annual inspection, make minor repairs if needed, replace the batteries, and they will test them and program them and keep us updated of any changes. And that is in the service plan. That was all in the quote when they, when you all approved it back then.
He did say.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Keep rolling our toes.
You all have Brittany's cart, so that when you're reading over the contract, if you decide you'd like to ask her questions or anything, she's real good about answering the phone too. Like, I left her a message when I first contacted her and I swear within the hour she contacted me back, so.
Okay, number, number eight, discuss and take action on update of Black Off Roof and Guttering on the community building.
Um, there was a small delay to them getting started due to that, uh, ice storm that we had, but he was out here the very next week and had them installed and I hope everybody's happy with it. I haven't hurt anybody.
I'll give them back a motion on that, sign off on that. This little paperwork.
Yep.
That's what you got me here for.
Okay, number, number nine, can get it to you comment. Anyone who won't speak on business for present, Brad's Board trustees or question sign up prior to the meeting and blah, 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 y'all know the deal.
Yes, ma'am.
You might wanna show everyone the radio and who's gonna be sitting the, uh,
the alarm off.
It'll be.
The alarm will off.
It'd be me for, for the time being.
Per Dale Thompson, when he came to that meeting, was that January? I believe so, January, might have been December. But anyway, back then, when Dale from the Grady County Emergency Management Office came, he stated that since we do not have a emergency manager for the town of Bradley, that responsibility falls on the mayor. And then if the mayor's gonna be out of town, he gets together with the board members and see, are you guys gonna be in town this weekend, I'm going away. And then he would hand it off to one of them.
Huh? Show the radio.
Out here. It's a big one.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, he programmed it where it's pretty simple to work. And basically you just hit that button and then that and then brings it up, I'll show you here. Well, turn it on first. And talks to you. Hit that, you got your tar, tornado siren, the steady siren for three minutes or siren off. If you want it off, you hit the menu, there's scroll button down to that, you hit that and it turns off. But when you get ready to set the siren off after you get it up there, well, get it back up there. I don't want to. Uh-oh. I done something.
You better practice.
We need some with just a button.
That's on topic, Dave.
That's the way it used to be.
But these are tied into the emergency manager in Grady, so that if we did, God forbid, get struck by a fire or a tornado, they, he could communicate that we needed help out here.
I'm helping, just a second.
We didn't get that from there.
I think you better practice.
We didn't go into that, yeah, I go and crash.
Come up here and practice. Write that down, I gotta punch that button.
But anyway.
Hey, I've been the same way. I said I've been the same way two days.
Oh, yeah. He's only done it.
A dozen times.
He's only done it a little bit till the day up here.
It sounded good.
He'll learn it.
And we got two different ones. We got the static.
Yeah.
Or we got the whaling. It was way over a wall and slowed down. And I think we need to use that one probably for tornado warning and on the test, we'll just use the solid.
Solid.
It's testing, it's riding.
The whaling.
Whaling is.
I don't know for sure.
Actual, one deal, actual, tornado or emergency.
So he may get to use it, he better learn how to do it.
Tornado or.
You wrote it down, right?
Let me find these instructions, that's why I always say, let me find these instructions. Did you read these?
I know.
The picture wasn't clear.
I know.
You're on your next.
Okay, I was just gonna wait till they got through talking.
Oh, he's just turning it off.
Okay, what I wanted to bring you up was the Easter hunt next month, it's gonna be at the end of the month, on the twentieth, then it'd be the nineteenth. So we don't have anybody up here to talk about it, so.
April nineteenth?
Yes.
Did everybody hear Ms. Frankie Matthews? Um, she's gonna be, her and some community ladies are gonna be hosting an Easter hunt, egg hunt.
Who's gonna hunt?
Um, here at this place, I'm sorry, at the community building on April nineteenth.
Are you gonna do the part too, like you all used to, the little kids go one way?
We do it all right here and use the back by the barn, that's as far as we go.
And then, um, if anybody would like to get with Ms. Frankie and donate, if you wanna donate to, uh, her and her group of friends getting the eggs, then you'd have to get with her, the town can't have anything to do with that, but.
And we'll talk about it next month too, I'll, I'll be here next month to bring it up.
Okay.
And I'll have a list of who else is gonna be helping, so in case they can't get a hold of me.
Okay.
That's it.
I have a more question.
That's what we're talking about.
I was on him. It was hitting me when I called, you know, the meeting, they need to know how many could be in here, the capacity.
And I have a call into the fire marshal, I have three phone calls into the fire marshal, I have yet to get a response.
I didn't know.
So, yes, I am currently working on it.
That was one thing very important.
I understand that, I understand that, but I cannot do anything, I've contacted the Grady County Fire Department. They told me you cannot call the fire marshal in OKC because they are directly for Oklahoma City. You have to call the one at the state office, they gave me the number, I've contacted it three times and I have yet to get a reply, so. I will get, I will continue to keep trying and I am trying to get an email for them, so that I can at least email them.
Well, one try calling Gary Bray and see if he can find out for you.
Well, one's try, call Gary Bray and see if he can find out for us.
He's our commissioner.
County Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yes. I mean, cause just nobody else can tell you, so maybe he can get down or know somebody, say, hey, just tell him he can be there. Have you asked Thompson?
Fired, dangerous.
No, I was directed to the state fire marshal's office, that's where I went. Figured the fire department wouldn't send me in the wrong area.
Right.
But maybe they have somebody in direct contact that they can get me to. I will contact both of them tomorrow.
That Grady County Fire guy.
No, Dale Thompson.
Dale Thompson.
Dale, yeah, I'll contact both of them tomorrow and get, see what they can get me an answer.
Would that be came to funerals too, with all those?
Yes, everything, yes.
Yes, anything, buddy.
Anything. We have a capacity.
It's something to work. We have a lot of people sometimes that here.
Yeah.
Judah Shepard is the state fire marshal, he's the only one who conducts his fire state, fire safety inspections across the state.
Exactly.
And he's never done it here.
But I can't even get a callback from his secretary.
Yeah, there's women at the office.
So I will contact these two, thank you for that direction, and I will see what kinda answer and where they could get me. To at least get on the schedule, so then at least. We did our part and we're not non, we're not in compliance, but we're not non-compliance, we're on the list to get looked at.
We're trying to be compliant.
We're trying to do what we're supposed to. And Jamie, you wanted to speak, sir?
No, I just had that question about the fact.
Okay.
I was commended with that.
Yeah.
For me to leave.
Yeah, I've been, I've been working on this for the last three and a half weeks.
Call it in the grow, they'll show up.
Huh?
Call it in the grow, they'll show up.
And what is this?
Two days to test the siren, a couple days in one, just set the same day, set it with same time.
First and the fifteenth? Okay, easy. First, that's when everybody's bills, fifteenth's when everybody gets paid.
They are trying to get it worked, they make.
Oh, you mean days.
Days of the week and what time that we probably do it, that, uh, so people would know what's going on. What we're talking about is testing the siren.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna try to set up a certain date of the month or something. In the middle of the month or at the meetings or something, we're not clear yet on that. And so, and say probably about noon, we'll set it off, that way everybody will know what's going on.
And what it sounds like.
And, and everything.
Cause each town does it a little, their, their sirens are a little, you're like, is that what?
It sounded good though.
Yeah.
It really did.
We could even hear it down there.
My kids were.
He could always do on the day, it's, at noon on the day, you're gonna have a meeting that way, so it's, hey, get a meeting night, they're testing the. Testing the sirens.
What would, he recommended. At least maybe once a week or every two weeks tested it. And I told him, I said, well, you said they tested it when we had a meeting.
Right.
And so, that's what, discussing the, the board here to see if we wanted to. Try to go in between or wait on the, just a meeting date and do it.
I think just the meeting dates for.
Yeah, or, or what, so that's gonna be something we're gonna be considering.
But that'd be a whole month, we would know if it had a problem.
Right. I think we need to test it at least every two weeks.
Every, every other Tuesday, so the second, which is our meeting night, and the fourth Tuesday of each month. Might be work, workable if that's what you guys agree on.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
At noon, and not do it at noon.
Yeah.
And that way, yeah.
That way us sleeper inners have alarm to get up to.
You see, working it for her benefit. Okay, so it'll be the second Tuesday?
Second, fourth Tuesday.
Second and fourth Tuesday of each month, at noon. So y'all, y'all know what's going on now. Anybody else got anything? Okay, meeting's adjourned. I make a motion we adjourn meeting.